We start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like you to stand if you're ready. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we proceed into the meeting, when we get to the public hearing part, we have microphones up here, we'll have a microphone there if you have some question or something you'd like to say. I'm going to try and do the first part of the meeting here. Can you hear me out there?
Hmm.
Without using the mic. So, we'll see how that goes. So, we can get through the motions till we get to the meeting.
Mayor, if you would, just because we're tape unit four.
Use the microphone?
Yes, use the microphone so they can pick it up on us.
All right, we'll go with the call to order roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Ern.
Counselperson Brad Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Anything from staff? Eddie?
Should be good.
Anything here?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. We'll now be looking for a approval of council meeting minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Take a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. Next, we'll move to finance and budget. We have the accounts payable listing with the additional listing here. If there's any questions or discussion, you can ask Finance Director Carlos Strain.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion on any of it? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That'll take us into the motion and general business part of the meeting. And the first part of the motions and general business will be the annual meeting business that we take care of every year as we assign boards and commissions and our paper and things like that. So... Takes me just a second sometimes, folks. I'm not super computer savvy yet after all these years. Mayor King has submitted his twenty twenty-two appointments and designations for your consideration. The twenty twenty-two council boards commission meeting schedule is also part of this packet. Please note the change in meeting dates in August and November due to not being able to hold meetings on the same day of elections, unless it's held after eight p.m. So, the council actually requested tonight to be to approve the twenty twenty-two appointments and twenty twenty-two council board commission meeting schedule is submitted. Now, I probably won't necessarily go through all this. There's several pages of committees and commissions and stuff. I can give you some of the appoints. Circle Star will be on paper. Riverbank Edward Jones First Farmers First Lions Credit Union, FM Community O M B and RBC Riverbank, four S M. Municipal Money Market, Northland Security will be on official depositories. City Attorney is Melanie West, Weber, Westner. City Auditor, Smith, Shaver Associates. City Engineers, Gina Obernolte from S E H. And City Insurance Agent is Alicia Nelson, First American Insurance. So, is there any questions or comments from the table here? Discussion? I'd look for a motion to approve committees, commissions, boards, and appointments as stated.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. That will now take us in motions and general business to our public hearing, which you folks are here for. So, I'm going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Public hearing is on proposed twenty twenty-three street utility improvements that include Fifth Avenue Southeast from First Street Southeast to Sixth Street Southeast. The notice of this public hearing was published in December twenty-first, twenty-eight. Circle Star notices were sent to the individual property owners affected by the proposed project. That will take us to our city engineer Gina Obernolte. We'll now go through the project.
All right. Can everybody hear me all right? All right. As Mayor Jimmy John said, we are here to discuss the twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan project. Project period of build from First Street or Truck Highway thirty down to Sixth. Existing conditions of this roadway, it was built prior to, prior to or around nineteen fifty-seven. We do not have exact records of when it was built. And it's been overlaid at an unknown time. Again, we don't have records for this roadway. Existing conditions, it's about forty-two to forty-four feet from basic curb to basic curb. This is a state aid designated route and a truck route. Our state aid designation means that for Stewartville, it is likely one of our higher A D T roads that is under the city's jurisdiction. And with that, we accumulate some funds from the state system to help in taking care of our infrastructure. So, examining the conditions today, there is widespread alligator cracking, transverse cracking and potholes. I think we all have seen the condition of the roadway and it's not in the best shape. There's also limited sidewalks. Sidewalks do not go the extent of the route and they don't make connections. There's also what we call a mid-block crosswalk near the school that's unprotected. The difficulties with mid-block crosswalks, even though they are utilized in some cases without some sort of a protection, drivers are usually not too aware. They're more aware that if they get to an intersection, there's likely to be a crosswalk, but not always in the middle of a block. So, it can be a potential safety The existing water main is a four-inch cast iron main. It was installed in nineteen fifty-eight or earlier. Again, we don't know. There are some of the hydrants do have dates on them, but sometimes hydrants also get replaced when the main does not. Significance with a four-inch water main is that it does not meet fire code protection. So, we need to upgrade it in size no matter what. There's also been a history of multiple breaks. I'm sure some of you have seen that where crews have had to dig it up and fix the water main. So, with the cast iron out there, we tend to get pockets within the metal and which causes breaks. We call them pox. We have switched to utilizing PVC for water mains in order to minimize that type of break. Sanitary sewer, it is sized appropriately. However, the condition of the sanitary sewer main is not in the best shape. It is a clay sewer, which our clay pipes have about three foot separation from each joint. Every joint is an opportunity for water and other things to infiltrate into our storm, to our system, or our sanitary sewer system, sorry. And a lot of the clay has cracks. And there's also service protrusions into the main that can lead to future collapse and also obstruction. So, we are looking to upgrade that. Storm sewer is fairly intermittent upon along the corridor. We will evaluate it and, if necessary, resize it to meet current standards. A lot of times, in the mid-nineties, pipes weren't always sized for the data that was, has been used, is old data. And our storms change. And so, we do try to keep up with at least sizing it for what we call a ten-year event to maintain travel across the streets. So, current use, we do have, it is one of the city's more popular routes for A D T. We also have the elementary school on the corner that we need to evaluate how kids and adults are getting to and from the school. And within public right-of-way, take into consideration all types of travel. Recommended improvements is to do a complete reconstruction, replacing the sanitary sewer main and all the manholes, replacing the sanitary sewer services from the main to the right-of-way. Same with the water main, upsizing it to meet fire standards and changing the material types. Also, reevaluating the hydrant layout in order to meet fire standards. So, it is possible, there could be a hydrant somewhere now, and after the project's over, it might be in a little different location so that we can strategically provide fire protection to everyone appropriately. We will also evaluate the storm sewer system, sizing it appropriately, rebuild the street, adding subdrain, and a drainage system under the road to minimize the amount of water that can stay underneath our pavement and just provide more strength to our pavement. We would be proposing to maintain the existing width. However, the existing width is oversized for standards. There is an option to decrease the width of this roadway, but knowing the usage and the truck route, we are looking to try and maintain as much of the width as possible with providing sidewalks and everything to provide for pedestrians and bikers along the road. Project funding. This is phase two of the project. Some of you may have heard. We've already talked to those on Fifth Avenue, South of Sixth, and it was just called Phase One. That's up for reconstruction in twenty twenty-two. We are calling this the Phase Two in North of Sixth for twenty twenty-three. Approximately three million dollars for the reconstruction. You can see how it's broken down in the different parts. And applying our normal assessment policy to this street, it does work out to be ninety dollars and fifty cents a foot approximately for the assessment. However, just because this roadway is built stronger and wider to accommodate for the truck traffic, we do not, as a city, want to put that against those property owners there. And that's part of what the state aid funds helps us do. We can offset some of those costs. And we would be looking to do the same rate for this project that gets applied to Phase One. So, it doesn't matter which side of six you lived on, you would be assessed at the same rate. As we talked about, there are multiple financing options. Part of this will be covered by our state aid funds. It's possible that we will go get the general obligation bond, the city sewerhold, their general funds, our enterprise funds, and special assessments, which is why we're here today. We have also applied for state, or safe routes to school grants, which is another source of state dollars, to do improvements for connections to schools. So, it is possible that we can get the grant money to help for sidewalk costs and also different options to improve the crossings, so the pedestrian crossings in the area. All right. This does go back in time a little bit to let you know we have already been working on Phase One of the project. We're here tonight. We've already actually reviewed the feasibility report with council. We are here tonight to get comments from all of you. And then, if the council deems a project is necessary for this area, to order plans and specs to be prepared. This is not the last night of any say. We will get together again at another open house when we're further along in actual designing it and been able to look into some of the different obstacles out there and be able to more personally discuss anything with your properties at that time, like where a subdrain connection should be made if you have downspoke coming out in certain areas, whether or not you want to widen your driveway, things like that, we will do at another time. Again, this public hearing is to determine, is there a need to do a project? So, we also have put together, I know a lot of times the question comes up is, will sidewalk actually fit? And so, we have put together a three-D view of what could look like with sidewalk out there. Now, we didn't put too much time into this. You will notice that your house looks like it's a European-style house and that has to do with the software. We didn't go out and take a picture of every single house and make it into three-D. That takes a lot of time and effort. But as we drive through this, you'll be able to see that we are looking to maintain in this version, the twelve-foot driving lanes, ten-foot parking lanes. This would require a five-foot boulevard with a five-foot sidewalk. And I'll just talk with that, that does fit within our sixty-six foot of right-of-way that is within the city's jurisdictional order to maintain all means public traffic, transportation within that public right-of-way. At this crosswalk, this is that mid-block crosswalk I was talking about, with the software, we were, and not being far along in design, we're not able to show this, but there is a potential we could put bumpouts or islands so that kids can be seen while they're still protected by a curb and you wouldn't have parked cars blocking that site. With that safe routes to school money, we would also be looking at what is called an R R F B. It's a random rapid flashing beacon that only flashes when the button is pushed. So, it wouldn't always be a flashing light continuously. When somebody came to the crosswalk, they can push the button, the lights will flash and bring attention to the vehicles or the One thing, I know I've said a forty-four-foot wide roadway is rather wide for comparison. Our typical residential street within Stewartville is thirty-six feet wide. So, just so comparison size, we aren't looking to put a thirty-six-foot wide roadway here, but that is what's typically in front of most neighborhood homes. In regards to, you know, any type of grade changes or things like that, wondering how a sidewalk would fit, we have multiple tools in our toolbox, either putting a curb on the back of the sidewalk, manipulating the design so that the sidewalk can come up and meet your grade, and then your boulevard might be a little steeper, putting a retaining wall in. And also, with going through driveways, we take as much of the driveway out and replace it with no extra expense in order to make the grade breaks work out, meaning that the city policy is twelve percent maximum. And we will take as much out to not exceed that in any location and also try and make the best transition as possible. That is what I have for presentation. And I guess we'll open this up for comments or questions.
Can you repeat the chart that had the reverence of a street, including the side was twelve feet?
Yeah, there are two twelve-foot driving lanes and two ten-foot parking lanes. And that's your forty-four-foot width. There's actually point six, seven feet of a curb in there. And then a five-foot boulevard, five-foot sidewalk. I do get a lot of questions about why five-foot on the sidewalk. And the answer to that is ADA laws do state you can go down to a four-foot walkway. However, it's only for two hundred feet. And every two hundred feet, you need to widen to make a passing zone. I get questions commonly of, can't that be every driveway? And the answer to that is no, because that sidewalk has to maintain a two percent or less crossflow. So, we can do different things to try and get a design through there. But in order to meet our ADA laws, it is actually easiest to keep it at five feet and not worry about widening every two hundred feet, changing widths, things like that, compensating for that type of stuff. So, that is where we're going with things as the five-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay, now, this is your public hearing. And we'd want you to ask questions. We want to be able to answer them. But we'd also just remind you, we'd like to have your name and address for the record so we can make sure we're, remember what we're talking to and about. And if you would, or could, if you walk up, so we can all hear you correctly up here too, if you possibly want to walk up to the microphone, or I guess you could run that one out to them, or I could run this one out. But so, next question, or did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay. Who else wants to ask or say something? Yes?
I want to know why the sidewalks, there's never been sidewalks there. Nobody's ever been injured. You talked about that. It's going to take, I mean, they're going to walk right past our front windows.
Now, just to, just to back up a second again, please, ma'am. We would like your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm not trying to...
No, no, no. I'm sorry. My name is Carol Atkins, and I live at one oh eight Fifth Avenue.
Great. Thank you.
So, yeah, we get questions quite a bit about why sidewalks, we've never had them before. Who really needs them?
Well, and I guess along that road, what you did on Third Avenue, there were no sidewalks for you.
Our project in twenty nineteen, or twenty eighteen?
How many neighborhoods on that?
So, the...
But you are correct. Third Avenue did not get sidewalks on that. And since we've gone back and forth, saw hot sidewalks, and we started posting them in, and the simple fact that we don't make connections, people always say nobody uses sidewalks. Well, part of that is because we've had, some places have them, some don't. And if someone walks over to the street, they're just going to stay in the street. If we make these connections, and obviously they don't fit every single place, but it's, it's a way of getting people off street in the areas that do have them. We've gotten compliments that people do like the sidewalks after they didn't really want them, and they've come back later and said that they are happy they've had them.
Well, and I really have issues with sidewalks. I have the issue of losing ten feet or more of my front yard and then walking in front of my windows.
But it's no different than any scenario. You guys have a sixty-six-foot right-of-way with the same setbacks. So, it's no different than previous neighborhoods. Fourth Avenue is one block away that we did two, three years ago. And that sidewalk there, we had several people come up and say, we wish you to put them on both sides. Now, not everybody's half of them, and we understand that. And people have a right to feel that way. But they have pulled people, we've had several people come up later and say, we wish we would have had them.
But how are we going to be able to park in our driveways, walk across the sidewalk?
Most setbacks allow. It's, it's no different than, for some people had the same questions and now that they're in, they're making it work. And it's not perfect. There are scenarios that it does not fit, that some people, and they're not over the halfway. We do realize that.
We'll have to take trees down. And I...
In some cases, yes, we do need to take trees down, not just for sidewalks. We also need to take trees down to replace your sanitary sewer lines and your water line because trees get planted too close or on top of them. And those are the biggest, well, the biggest fault too, when we have breaks and when you have backups, are those trees. So, if they are on possible through your service lines, things like that, in order to replace them, there are times we need to get, take the trees down.
What's the cost here?
That is up to you.
You might, you might, one really quick thing is, we try to do all we can to save as many trees as we can unless there's a direct conflict. The other thing we found out is these last several years have gone by, we've actually had property owners saying, hey, as long as you're coming through, that tree was getting pretty old. If the project can take it down and don't cost you, we'll start fresh or over or whatever. So, we're willing to keep working with you. And you'll have to let us know when we get to that second workshop of special conditions you want us to try to work around.
No. And part of the reason to this meeting tonight is we need your input. We want to hear your input. But also, tonight what we'll do afterwards is approval of plans and specs, which will give us a much better idea where things are going to land, where they're going to wind up, if you understand. But you know what I mean? We're a long ways away from pulling any trees out or doing any of that yet. We're just at the very beginning of this. But we're looking for input, so I would want to hear what you think of this. Bill?
Oh, and then just one follow-up on the sidewalk can help.
Oh, and then just one follow-up on the sidewalk, and helpful it is. That question's come up the last couple of years and as Sean has pointed out, one of the things the council did based on public comment was slide the sidewalks closer. Definitely stay within the right way, but normally the spec calls for like an eight-foot boulevard and the five-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, with transitions, we do prefer an eight-foot boulevard. Actually, the, going down to about a six, five, does make it challenging to keep maintaining drainage and the ADA grades. But with the forty-four foot wide roadway, this is what can fit within a sixty-six foot right of way.
So council did ask the engineering staff to try to readjust to accommodate parking as much as possible when it's off-site and then to have as much possible distance in those areas. And Sean and I have gone out to try to see the closest homes and measure. In fact, on the first phase neighborhood, a couple of neighbors were good about letting us stake out where that would actually sit. And then once they saw that that distance, okay, that's really not as bad as we thought, made it maybe a little bit more livable or workable. And we'll be glad to do that in any of your homes or neighborhoods to give you that feel of how that would sit or where that would sit.
And as Engineer pointed out, you are on a wider street and part of this because of all the truck traffic and everything else. One of our options was we could have narrowed that street out, but we think, or I feel you people all enjoy parking on both sides of the street. If we narrow it up too much to make anything work with trucks and everything else, we probably have to lose parking on one side. I didn't feel that was an option for you folks up there, no, the council did. We know we all like to park in the street. So we're trying to accommodate all that, plus part of the boulevard part is we could probably maybe go a little narrower, but you would not be happy with us in the winter time. Because third time they plow, they're gonna fill that side. The narrower that boulevard gets, the more your sidewalk when they plow, you know how the end of your driveway can get. The president winds up on the sidewalk. That's just kind of a mess too for everybody. That's, Mark knows that up in our neighborhood where we live up there. But that's partly, we're trying to find that happy medium to make everything fit on that street without... I, I, I really don't like any of that on that street at all myself, I don't. Now, maybe all you people, are you willing to give up one side of parking? I don't, I don't know anybody who wants to do that.
There, there is an option to go down to forty-two feet that gives you your six-foot boulevard then. And forty-two feet still meets standards for a truck route having parking on both sides. Being a truck route going down to thirty-six, yeah, it would be very difficult with parking on both sides technically. It still works out, but you aren't gonna feel that comfortable driving down the street.
They say it works because it makes the drivers feel uncomfortable so they slow down or be careful. I'm not gonna guarantee that's what happens, you know?
But it, you think about a normal parking spot. Most of the places we go and park, it's about nine feet wide. That's actually what our city requirement is, is a nine-foot parking. Now, we are also able to go down to a ten-foot driving lane, I would not do that here. So a twelve-foot driving lane is actually the same width as what's on the interstate. And so if you have a twelve-foot driving lane, we can practically go down to an eleven-foot driving lane. There's ways to take widths out. However, the feeling was that people would not want the width of the road to decrease due to the truck route in this area. But willing to take comment there, but also need to take into consideration all other means of transportation besides vehicular traffic. The other things that boulevards play with or have, that we have to consider within the boulevards, one is width. You, you want some width there so you don't place for the snow to pile. We also want some width there so that your driveway entrance doesn't get too steep and we can keep a nice profile on the sidewalk and maintain drainage so that things still flow down to the road and drain away into the storm sewer system. So there's a big balancing act there. And on top of that is the city's not the only one who has utilities within the roadway. And so there's power poles, which we have been already in talk with Peoples. There's a potential, we may be able to get rid of the poles, but it might not happen also. So we need to leave a space for them. But there's also your communication lines, your gas lines, everything else that's buried. They, for to maintain costs and stuff appropriately, they'd rather be in a boulevard. They do not want to be buried under the street because whenever they have an issue, need to dig things up, it gets rather costly for them, which in turn comes around to all of us because they still have to pay for it and so then our rates go up too. So it's a big balancing act with all inuse is up the right way.
And when Jenna talks about the possibility of moving the poles, the last two-year project we did around Lakeshore and all that, if you go down there and take a look, the neighborhoods decided they wanted rear the poles and all the above ground so they bury everything. So on poles you'll see the street lights. But that will add to your expense because you have to, there'll be a hookup charge for the electrical to your house and stuff when they bury it. But I don't know, are we talking on this project, the possibility of burying it, if everybody wants it for the majority of the month?
We, well, actually Peoples kind of at one time wanted it. So I have not talked with them recently, it was about six months ago. But they have, I, just the cost of tree trimming and everything else, that they're, they have stated they would be willing to participate in a way to bury. But there is a cost to change your hookup.
Well, they've done that. They have covered the cost of getting the power up to the house. The only thing the homeowners have been responsible for is making that connection from what they got at the house to wherever they got it, connect it to the power box, to their outside meter box and stuff. So you would have to have your own electrician come in and make those connections.
That wasn't the only expense.
No.
You had to put a new meter socket in, which was a pretty big expense.
It, it, you're right. There, if you had a wholesale meter-
It's a three thousand dollar expense.
If you had a wholesale meter, you are correct, they charge people for the new meter. And that's done through Peoples, that's not the city portion, but that is what happened.
It's a bigger expense than what you're trying to-
Well, that, that, you're, you're correct. A lot of them have the new meter already there, so then all they had to make was that electrical connection.
Now, the subdrains that Jenna talks about, you all understand what she's talking about on that. Now, some of you up towards the boner end of it, you'll notice in the winter time all the water being pumped out, some pumps into the street, pooling, freezing all over, which helps crack the streets and the curves. Subdrains she speaks of, you'll be able to hook your subpumps to the subdrain so it won't be pumped on the street anymore. Which will increase the life of everything, plus the safety, you haven't got all these big ice ponds all over and everything else.
Yeah, your, your subpumps will pump directly into this subdrain pipe that we usually put right behind, behind the back of curb at about four feet deep, three and a half, which then connects right into our storm sewer system. So it does, it keeps from pumping out the sidewalks, pumping out the street. It helps maintain the life of our infrastructure. And even if you do, if during construction, you do have your sub pump coming out to right of way, the contractor would connect it in for you. If you do not, they will still put in a service stub for you, but then you'd have to bring it out to their and connect in if you wanted to.
And once this is in, you will be required, you will not be allowed to dump water on the street anymore. Once this is in, we will require you to make that connection. That's why it's nice if it's there first when they come through, they just make that connection before you and no challenge.
The gal behind Judy had her hand up a couple of times. Okay, which one, what part did you hear, which part are you?
Well, it's finished now.
Okay, did you need to rehear it or did you?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Steve?
Steve, Danny, four hundred fifth Avenue southeast. I don't think anybody's got a problem with the street, we all know how much truck traffic goes down there. I think the problem people are having is the fact that many years ago, the city took eight feet of property from the homeowners to make a truck route. Now you wanna have ten more feet of property basically taken for your sidewalk and your boulevard. There's a lot of houses on Fifth Avenue, people, it's just that you can't park in your driveway because your car's hanging over the sidewalk. Sit in front of your house and you can shake hands with a person walking down the sidewalk.
Well firstly, Steve, I don't think we're taking any more property that's already in the right way.
I understand that, but when you have your sidewalk, if your sidewalk is ten feet in from the curb, some of these houses don't have that huge of a setback after they took the eight feet years ago.
And I do not disagree with you, but they took me up there and they measured a bunch of the ones that I pointed out. And it did fit beyond my expectations, I can tell you that.
Do you want to live in those houses, Jim John? Do you want to live in those houses?
I've got an eight-foot boulevard with a four-foot sidewalk, so I'm sitting back farther than you guys are. I mean, when they walk by the front of my house, the same thing, they can look right, if somebody wants to look in your window, they can look in your window. Now, I don't think it's to the point that you, I don't think in your house you're gonna be shaking hands with anybody, are you?
I'm actually not, I would, we are not actually arguing for us all together.
There's a whole lot of them south of us that are gonna be close.
I think, at least, obviously I live in the same house. I think it's this, because we're arguing together. We already went through this because we own property on the other side of town. We know what's gonna happen, we get it, we, we already know. But it's the sidewalk that is bothering so many people. And you're telling us we have to have a boulevard, you're telling us we're gonna worry about removing snow. Maybe we all want that sidewalk right on the street. The kids are gonna walk by, we're gonna, I want the sidewalks because kids walk by my house, I want it. But I want you to consider not taking that much space, put it on the street. Everyone says, oh, we gotta have this, we gotta have this. Hey, the places that have the sidewalks right next to the street are doing just fine. The snow's not sitting on there. I walk the town all the time, I know because I'm a walker. There's not been any trouble on those streets that I've seen and even right after snow. So not really understanding that setback with that extra five.
I'm gonna say something again that the rest of the staff hates when I say it. You're preaching to the choir on me, but they've convinced me over the years that we need a little bit of a setback. I don't disagree, put it at the curb. But that's been shown to me time and time again, that's not the place for it.
I guess I'll just make a comment maybe for Sean. But the sidewalks that are right on back of curb, yep, those get cleared by the Public Works Department. And so if we keep putting sidewalks everywhere right behind the curb, that's just gonna increase your costs for living here because the Public Works Department will need to grow in order to maintain those. Now, this past year's project and the year before, did we put sidewalks right behind curb? Yes. Why? We only had forty-five and fifty-foot right of ways. We did not have sixty-six feet. And we still needed to find that balance. So, plus it connects into downtown, which has that more of a feel of a sidewalk right behind a curb. So there are different ways of doing things. But for safety factors, for maintaining costs around the city, a boulevard, it's very helpful. The other part to it is the sidewalks over here are not five feet wide, they're six and a half feet wide. So, and that is so that we can still maintain that ADA walkway. We can get a sign in if needed. So there's even more to clear, there's more cost to it. It is a more expensive design. So those are the types of balancing things that the council and city staff take into consideration when we're looking at all of these things is where do we put all the expense and who do we put it upon?
And as Jenna's explained a couple of times, and I've learned a hard way over the last thirteen years, there's certain things that I would like to see done just like you. But because of ADA standards and other rules and regulations handed down from above us, we gotta do what we're told to. I hope you understand some of this does come from above, even from above, the staff or anybody on its state. Just like she said, you gotta have passing lanes and things like that if you can narrow it up. Can't use driveways. I've argued all these points with Jenna, you can ask her, we've, we've had some great discussions about this, pretty long ones.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Is the sidewalk gonna be on both sides for sure or can you just do it on one side? I don't believe it can be out of us.
We're doing both sides on the fifth, on the other side of six, aren't we? The council has come to the agreement over the years. We made the mistake of the question you asked. We left blank spots here and there, we are filling those in. For all your, all you to know, we are eventually filling all these in, all these blank spots that you talked about we left. We're trying to match up on the other side of fifth, or six, excuse me, what we're doing on the south side. We talked and talked and talked about on that side, one side or the other, it came down to two. So we'd like to match the rest of fifth up is what, is what the deal is. That's the theory behind this, yes ma'am?
Then my question is, you said regulations, so does the regulation state that you have to have that five feet from the side of the road to the sidewalk?
No, we've narrowed that up, we've narrowed that up on our own. We normally would go with an eight foot.
So you could even make it smaller, like you said, that with a snow removal, but then I've gotta pay somebody to remove the snow off my sidewalk.
So-
I don't think you quite understood what I meant by that. It's, it's like when you go out and shovel your driveway, if a student comes back by and flies the street, you wanna throw in the shovel when the trucker goes by.
Right, and that's, I get that. But I, now that you're gonna put in sidewalks? Because right now I'm taking care of my mailbox state. And so that's gonna be an added expense on me anyways because I'm gonna have to pay the guy to do the sidewalk whereas before he just shovels my driveway. So I guess the snow that's piled up-
So it, what the difference is, is it's the snow that falls versus clearing the snow that falls and then later clearing the snow that the po- also puts on there in a pile. So clearing it twice, the amount of snow you have to clear. You have that two or three inch, being able to take the shovel down and just scoop it away or having to actually take a bigger shovel and instead of just push, plow it away, scoop it because now you have a windrow of snow on top of the sidewalk.
I under your concern.
I get that.
I got something, I understand your concern a hundred percent. We've heard this every year. What you're gonna find out, no, no, just let me finish for a second, you will find out. You live in a great little community and the guy down the street with the snow blower, the brand new one, he'll end up doing, just like in my neighborhood, whoever gets out there first, we end up doing the whole sidewalk. If I get out there first, I can, it's just, that's the kind of people you live around here. If you don't believe it-
No, I believe that because we also do that at our home. I've had neighbors that have done that. But I, I just don't like the idea of that sidewalk being that close to my front. And chances are you have to take a tree that I've been growing for five years-
Now, did you put your address? We got your address, you got our address. Do you mind if we send Sean and some of these people up here the next day or two before it's too much snow and they kinda take a look and see? And I'll probably even come with them, we'll kinda mark it off and we'll see where we're at.
Okay, and I know we-
Because it's all, like I said, tonight, we're gonna authorize plans and specs. It's not like we're, I want you to understand, we're not authorizing this project tonight. We're authorizing the next step so we can see the plans and specs too up here. And you guys have anything to say?
Well, and with that, we look at those plans with us with you before the council actually says, yep, this is what we're doing and go put it out the street for bids from contractors. So we do have another opportunity to talk about it with the information we get from, which we already did do our survey because we wanted to get it done before the snow. So you might have already seen our surveyors out there. So we collected data, we have not started designing anything. We did this three D model, but that's it. We did our feasibility report, we actually looked at four different layouts in the feasibility report differently. So the street, how the cost would be even using concrete versus- So the street, how the cost would be even using concrete versus bituminous. Um, and we had a workshop with council, working through some of those options. This is what we've landed on so far, and we wanted to share what your potential expense would be. Um, with this information, we take what you guys have been saying into consideration too, at direction of council. We design, um, what we think's going to fit us. When we run into a problem, we come and talk about that again. So, we're not finalizing, yes, it's absolutely going to be a forty-four foot wide roadway, five-foot boulevards, five-foot sidewalks. But that is what you could expect right now. Right now, what we're asking for authorization is, is the street out there in bad enough shape? Does something need to be done?
Yes.
I want to add one thing. You have people who have been here a long time and are involved with us. We've done many CIPs and we've evolved. I mean, we did do sidewalks for a while, then we did, and then we did, and we've had some closer. And we're, some of the information we're putting together is what we've experienced, we've gotten over the years. It's not that, you know, some people, we don't find it close, so then you fill it with snow and we, we put it further out the street. And then there are rates that you're after because it's filling up with snow and there did, so we're not doing it, but what you guys know.
Oh, I.
It's, it's experience that we've gained by the stuff that we've seen over the years and the feedback we've gotten is why we based what would come up. And we've, like I said, we narrowed it eight foot, down to six, maybe five foot, because that's where we've got the least amount of complaints on this stuff. So your, your points are all valid.
And we're taking them all into consideration. Don't think we're not here. Way in the back. And right there, this is Ram.
March Ryan is three oh nine Fifth Avenue, southeast. What my question is, is on our side of the street then, so from St. Bernard's Church all the way down. You know, the first part, you have such the steep inclines on the front yards. What happens with all of that if you're going to put in sidewalks on that side of the street?
If they can make a work rate, they'll be retaining walls. If they can get the slope when they're working the streets and doing all this stuff, if they can make that come out, there'll be, some of them homes, I know where you're talking, right by the church.
Right.
You're talking about retaining wall.
But even by the church?
That's why me, you'd be talking probably, I, I mean, I'm talking for the engineering, yes, but I bet Jenna will tell you, there'll probably be a retaining wall through there.
You did something last year on Lakewood, I had a retaining wall over the sidewalk there.
Yeah, there might be instances where we can't get grades to work out, and we do need a retaining wall that goes on the backside of the sidewalk.
That's going to do the whole street. There's only two houses that, in between, in between Highway thirty and Fourth Street, there's only maybe two houses that have level ground. The rest of us are on any.
And so I guess to get a sidewalk in, the ground doesn't have to be completely level. We do grade that boulevard out, put the sidewalk in them, we may have to do some grading back and fix it into your yard. Um, when those instances happen, again, when we review those plans, we'll be able to show you what the expense, where our limits are that we would need to go. If there's objections to that, we'll go and we'll put a retaining wall in that area. But, again, without starting the design, we don't know all those instances yet.
And March, we've asked the engineering firm all these same questions, we really have, and we're waiting to see what the design looks like. And that's.
I just wanted to voice mine.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine, but, no, I know. And we had some other good, we had another good question today. One of the questions we had on the phone call today was, how can we estimate the price two years out? Very good question. We can go by our best estimates of today when we listen to our engineers' estimates. But we still have to find a say. If this, if this is supposed to be estimated at three million out of Raji, it comes in at four and a half million. I, I don't think you're going to see me in agreement with it, but that's to be seen. That's down the road in November of twenty-two. So we have to go with what we can go with today, and it, but it's a great question. How do you do this? How do you estimate that far out? So far, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta hand it to our engineering firm. I don't know how they do it. Have they, have they always been right on or just a tad under? But, we'll see. I tell her that every year, we'll see what happens.
It might be like eighteen plus years of experience, I don't know.
Then who's responsible for maintaining that retaining wall?
So, but if a retaining wall does get put in, um, that retaining wall will likely still be on the right-of-way line or within right-of-way. And that would be the city's expense then. If, if it is something in some cases where, yeah, we might come and ask for an easement. Um, and that being the city's retaining wall then. Um, if it was pre-existing right behind the sidewalk and not within right-of-way, that is a property owner's expense. So, the, but I also know there's not pre-existing retaining walls out there, so none of this would be the property owner's expense.
Okay, in the front row here, you and your hand up. Yep, you, you got it. And picture name and address this time.
Yeah, Heather, uh, Heather Ludwig, four thirteen Fifth Avenue. Um, the question I have is, I looked at the handy spreadsheet you did, and the assessment, um, that would be assessed to each property. What is the typical way, since I'm a trustee, just need to understand what the typical spread of that assessment, is it paid upfront? Is it spread over time, or how is that typically?
You have several options, and probably maybe Carla or Bill could explain them a little better.
I might know it, but I'll let them.
Yeah, we'll let them do it.
Well, it's worked out really well. Uh, we've been doing the CIP replacement projects for the last, what, ten, dozen years? Thirteen years now, and we utilize state guidelines, but we give a number of options. Uh, the portion that's assigned to you could be paid right upfront. And a lot of people have elected that as these last few years have gone by. Or you can pay some portion of that upfront and will split, spread the rest of it in equal payments over ten years. Or you don't have to do anything, make arrangements with us, and you can have the full amount put on an assessment roll. And it's spread out over the ten years in equal payments. And at any point in time during those ten years, if you want, you can come in and pay off the balance at whatever that is. Now, those that take the ten-year plan, there has been these last several years of small interest charge, um, that's required by what we have to do. And it only ends up, it's been out just one percent over the prime. And of course, these last several years, that's been great for the citizens because we've had great rates.
What if you pay it all upfront, there's no interest?
Yeah, then you wouldn't have any.
And, and it goes on your tax roll. So it's not something that you have to pay out of pocket, it goes on your tax roll. There's a couple of other things that go with it. Um, one dependent on, dependent on age and dependent on qualifications, you may be able to defer. So like if you're taking care of it as a trustee, um, you may be able to defer that tax payment or that assessment until that property is sold. Um, and out of the trust. Um, and then dependent on age and income and some of that, and with different guidelines, there may be deferrals that you can do. The other thing to know is then if a property is sold with an assessment on it, those assessments need to be paid upfront in order to sell that property as well. You refinance your home, um, that'd be something that would, um, that you would have to then pay that assessment at that time too. But there's ways to be able to do it, and like Phil said, we're, we do prime rate plus one. Um, and we try to keep it as minimal as possible, and we actually have had a ton of people in the last two years pay everything upfront. Or they paid, you know, half of it and put half of it on the tax roll and then are going to finish paying this year. And since it's a twenty twenty-three project, nothing hits in twenty twenty-two, it's a twenty twenty-three.
It won't, you won't even stay until twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-four's tax statements.
Right, yep, okay.
And then even with the tax statements, they divide out that yearly payment over your two, um, slips you get, the one in May and the one in October.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I need the mic. Dennis Holrick, five twenty-seven Fifth Avenue. Um, so I'd just like to voice my support for the, the project as a whole, especially the sidewalk portion. Um, but a, a question directly for the road itself. Since it's a state aid highway and it's a truck route, does it get a thicker layer of bituminous to last longer?
So it's not a state aid highway.
Oh, it's not, sorry.
We get state aids to apply to our local streets. So we are applying to our stated local streets. Um, it is a truck route. It will have a thicker section than our, um, other sections. So being that this is a state aid route taking state funds, it's not just my review or my firm's review and city staff reviewing the plans. The state's going to review them too. Um, and we have to go through the, all the calculations based off of the truck counts out there, everything else, what types of weights. And build it for the life expectancy that we want to see.
And what is the life expectancy?
Typically, for our bituminous streets, it's about thirty-five years with overlays and maintenance. Most of the time, you won't see a street taken out until after fifty years, might be past due, but, um.
Like this one?
Yes, there's some balancing there. Um, but when it comes to most streets, they do usually hit fifty years or more in life before they are reconstructed.
And that was a good question, and if you noticed on the presentation, that's why I went from ninety dollars a foot down to seventy-three because we pick up that extra cost for the extra thickness. Or, I, I'm not picking up all myself. Part of it, I paid part of it, but we're all paying part of that extra cost to the city. But that's where the state aid money we pull in helps pay for that too.
Yes, paying for the extra thickness and the extra width. So, again, we'll compare it to your neighbors south of Sixth with working out their project. That'll help us set what your assessment rate truly will be. What you saw today is that upper end max, I do not believe that will hit that. It'll be closer to that seventy, I think it was seventy-six dollars per foot instead of the ninety.
I guess I do have one more structural portion. Is this the full elevated curb or is this the, the slope?
This is the full six-inch elevated curb. If there are design problems in areas with drainage, we could go down in parts to a four-inch curb instead of the six-inch. But we do want the rise in the curb. It helps protect your lawns and boulevards from the plow. And it also maintains our drainage wave better. We have a better drainage wave with that back in there.
Why don't you get a number of factory?
Yep, I do. It's a really simple, it's probably for Bill. Um, if you live on a corner lot, okay, and you had the assessments from Fourth Street when that was done, are you going to be assessed on Fifth Avenue then also?
No, we'll.
I guess I can even answer that.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, I can. You are only assessed with a two-sided lot.
Yep.
Two sides of frontage, you are assessed for one side, and it is the shortest side. So, if that was your shortest side and we see that you have a long side on this project. Um, your spreadsheet should show that the city's picking up your tab. If there is something wrong there, please let us know.
Steve?
Yeah, I don't think there's any question that that road needs to be redone. Infrastructure's terrible underneath. And I'm going to put on my fireman hat now and say that, you know, the fire had us so far spread apart on that road. And we have to hook up to one. We're just laying out huge amount of holes and, you know, get into compliance with the five hundred feet or whatever between hydrants and good water flow. So, it, it, it's a needed improvement.
Thank you for that. Uh, somebody get your hand up.
I, just one more. So.
I'm getting old.
Why doesn't, um, that St. Bernard's Church then, when you said you're only assessed for one side?
So the church actually has four sides of frontage. Um, and our policy states that they pay for the two small sides. So the church does have to pay, since they own front, have frontage on four sides, it is two. And it is the two shorter sides. This is one of those short sides.
Should we have to pay for both?
I, for the, any other assessments, um, I'd have to ask the rest of the staff to look up that past.
We'll have to, if you think they've been charged for four sides, we'll have to look that up.
I'm very, very certain.
I might be wrong, but that was when I worked there, that was my understanding, because Father Hamel was pretty upset.
Well, that'll, that'll, that'll give Carla something to do if she can look that up.
So, and then that affects me because then we got to pay more for the church.
Good question.
Thank you, one more question. We own a lot of trees, as we all know, and it's, so you guys, or this project covers taking all those trees out, you're going to take out of our front yard, right? Because there's probably going to be four trees, I'm betting maybe five.
If they got to go, if they're in within the parameters of the project. If they're not, they're still going to do your trees there, so.
But I'm just saying, that's part of the project. You're not going to come and say, you got to pay to take out five of your trees so that we can do this?
No, sir.
No, the tree removal is part of the project cost. Um, so anything within our right-of-way, if, if we do have to take it out, we can't save it. Um, that's part of the overhead cost of the project.
Okay, it's been a really good meeting. I don't want to cut you off short. If you got any more questions or something, I'd like to hear them, but way in the back.
I have a quick question, John. Mike Loftus, living three way Fifth Avenue. I noticed on the spreadsheet, the assessment you guys have down as far as foot, uh, linear feet of frontage. Is not current to what my abstract says I own, and I know that that needs to be probably resolved in the county and then goes to you guys?
That's something we'll have to check and do. It's a good question.
It's, I noticed it last year. I tried to find my property corners for other reasons, and it is off, and it's not just mine. Steven Carroll's and also Mike and Tony's is off as well, so the three houses are all off. Now, if we have to have that, is that something we have to have surveyed to get that located to match up the abstracts, or who's going to pay for that?
I have a answer to that. Anybody got an answer to that right now?
So we will, um, the assessment roll is based off of what the company has in their GIS map.
Understand.
Um, with figuring out our base map and prior to design, we pull whatever plaques we can find. And go based off of the plaques where property lines should be and fit that right-of-way before we even start design. So, um, if we could get Stephanie, actually, your addresses, we'll make sure our ser- licensed surveyors look into that. Um, if changes need to be made though, um. Within the county, like, we can, we can tell the county, hey, this is what the plat actually says, your GIS is wrong, that shouldn't be a cost at all. If there's something else going on and there's a real question to where property corners are and they need to be physically located, that is typically a property owner's cost.
Great. Thank, I don't want to take you short, but we have other business to move on to, and I want to thank each and every one of you for coming. I want to thank each and every question. There will be more meetings. You will be notified. There will be more public meetings. And one of them is like Jen said, the open house, when if you decide at that time you want your driveway a bit wider or stuff, so we get it fit into the plans. So, if it's all right with you folks, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, one more?
I think this is just an understanding of the remarks column, what the addresses mean in the remarks column. They're, they're all say northwest.
Oh, yeah. That, that was, that was just somebody putting the wrong initial.
Well, you might have found loophole.
No, because that's not the actual address. That's just a remark about the property or, or a previous property. So, um, yeah, you can ignore that one. That's usually where we put notes of, yes, this is the long side, so the city's going to pay for it, or this is the short side. If there's, this is a four-sided parcel. Um, things like that totally know when we're selling ourselves. I see, okay.
Anyone on the table here have anything to say? Dad? Staff? Bill?
Yep, just one more thing, because this question usually pops up during the project. Whatever the city pulls up or the contractor pulls up during the course of the project, whether it's yard space or driveway panels, that gets replaced as part of the project. And sometimes when they're trying to accommodate the grades of different yards, you might see a name. you might see a neighbor that gets a little bit more cut off. We're still gonna, even if that goes up onto your side, we'll still get that replaced or repaired once the project's done, when that maintenance is done, so. And then if it's, um, concrete, when they're coming through with all the curtain gutter and apron work, we get those panels done for you, if it's blacktop, the contractors always been good to match that up with whatever you have existing.
Yeah, the apron's a portion between the, the sidewalk and the back of curb. That apron part will go back in as concrete no matter what. If you have bituminous currently, um, the sidewalk and matching back into your driveway, it will go back in as bituminous. If it's concrete, it will go in as concrete.
All right, once again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming and for your input. We, we do take this input seriously, and we will be looking at different things you've asked tonight. So I will now, we didn't have any written, did we, any written statements? I will now close the public hearing. We're back to the regular meeting. And at this time, the next step in this process would be to, and you're welcome to stay if you want. We have some more meeting to do, but if you wanna leave, you can too. Thanks for coming, Don. You, you've always been asking a question, all right. The next step in this process would be to adopt a resolution ordering the improvements and preparations of plans based on feasibility study and the comments received at the public hearing. This resolution needs to be passed by a core physical as a public improvement. If passed, as expected, we would advertise for bids in October of twenty-two with a bid opening in November of twenty-two. So at this time, I would look for a motion to approve or deny resolution twenty, twenty-two dash resolution order ordering improvements and preparations of plans for the twenty and twenty-three street and utility improvements.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, that carries. Now, that'll take us on to First American Insurance's resolution. Alicia Nelson says in service, if your First American Insurance is unable to attend tonight, she can come to a future meeting if additional information is needed on insurance coverage. For municipal tort liability options for twenty twenty-two through the League of Minnesota Cities, this is remaining the same as previous years. So, Bill, quick rundown?
I can explain it, cause every year, everyone's like, okay, does that mean we do it? Basically, we're limiting the amount of liability that the city would face.
To one person.
Hurt what they call per occurrence, which could either be a property situation or a person's situation.
So, do we need to waive?
So we do not waive, don't we?
Do not waive.
We wanna keep the tort liability, yeah. A lot of trade limits in place. I'll make a motion to not waive.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have seconds all over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us on to the capital equipment plan, replacement of the twenty sixteen Bobcat Skid steer. It is thoroughly approved, twenty twenty-two capital equipment plan and the twenty twenty-two budget, the Bobcat Skid steer is scheduled for replacement. This purchase is replacing the twenty sixteen Bobcat Skid steer S seven fifty. We budgeted fifty thousand for this replacement. The cost of the replacement of the Skid steer has been estimated at sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven and nine cents. Trade-in value of thirty-three thousand brings us to a net cost of thirty-one thousand, five dollars, nine cents. It's quoted as the same as the state contract price. So the council action would be to approve or deny the purchase of the S seven seventy T four Bobcat Skid order. So we're going just to touch bigger, sure?
No, it's still comparable mileage.
Is this tri-?
No.
So we have a motion to approve or deny the purchase.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that carries. Next will be maintenance agreement with Home State County. Mark, I can never figure out why nobody wants to stay. Can you? Home State County maintenance agreement. Attached, please find the annual maintenance agreement is submitted by Home State County. This agreement covers the portion of County Road one oh six and thirty-five. The agreement amount of five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents is up from last year's amount of three thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. Public Works Director Hale is recommending approval of the contract. Uh, council actions to approve the agreement is submitted by Home State County. We have a motion. Or do we have questions? We want to approach Director Hale.
What is that, Dan? What do they, we have them do, of course, with the roller, or we do it for them?
We took over, it's going up, cause we took over thirty-five, but we've agreed to go up to County Road eight. So they're giving us a little extra allowance for us maintaining, cause that's a good turnaround point.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Otherwise, we're turning around the I ninety bridge where our property is.
I totally agree, yeah, I get it.
So that's where it shot up a little bit for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that carries. That takes us out of motions to general business, that takes us to the mayor's staff consulting boards. First one tonight is the mayor's report. The city of Sturgis would like to send their sympathies to the families of Dwayne Hall, Jerry Tugend, Artis Swenson, Wayne Grodlushen, Dwayne Wong, and Betty Jo Marshall. As a reminder for everyone, we're right in the middle of winter, our snow emergency ordinance is in place. Don't get caught cogging on our streets during the snow removal event. You can call for a, alert on your phone or they'll text you. Don't get caught like me, I did not take my phone number, so I don't get alerts. So if you change phones or carriers, please update that. Community coffee breaks, next one's on February eighth, we had one today, we had, we had a very good turnout today at that one. And the next one's on February eighth, and the topic is the importance of street maintenance. Watch for more information on weekend and evening sessions that'll be coming up on other topics. Congratulations to Clean Manning and Janet Taylor, who collaborated to write When I Woke Up. Kalino's inspired in fifth grade during a writing competition and now has fulfilled her dream of being an author. And don't forget, the foundation's Toast and Taste event will be set for March twenty-fifth. Always a wonderful time. Watch for information on the event and how you can help your community by donating, because the foundation does great things for our community. That's all I've got. That takes the city administrator's report.
Uh, report's in your packet. Uh, the only thing I'd bring your attention to is we're now looking at some joint work sessions coming up with you all. And the first one would be that planning workshop, um, which we're proposing to be Friday, February eleventh. So if you can start taking a look at your calendars to see if that'll work. We do have a backup date, um, near the end, or the end of month. But see if that works first, cause that'll get us rolling on some things, and you can finalize that at our next meeting. The other, uh, uh, opportunities we got for work sessions is a CIP for the next five years after these projects are done. And then, um, obviously, you had mentioned a possible interest, and we can discuss that at the planning workshop. Um, potential forums, public forums on future law enforcement.
All right, so any questions for, any questions for administrator Bill? All right, thank you, Bill. Finance Director Carly, or do you have something to add, Bill?
Well, uh, we just got the report Friday, so I'll get that out to you in a written format, but great news the city received. As you know, um, all cities are under review of our bond rating for the city's credit report. And I'm very happy to say if we got bumped up or, um, uh, an improved upon, uh, credit report that will help us in the long run for any like long-term borrowing or bonds, which give us, and usually that's been historical throughout the time and history of these credit reviews, is that we get better rates, uh, when we're out looking for the money. So we went from a double A three to a double A two, and the report card actually showed we're qualifying for a double A one, but they're conservative on how they make the adjustments upward. But it's huge great news, cause we've been at double three, double A three for quite a while. And our number of years, I wanna see that improve is great. So we'll get you the report. Uh, they obviously complimented the council in the conservative, um, budgeting that you all have been a part of. Um, they also complimented, um, the management of the city and how we're taking care of all our bookkeeping, recordkeeping, auditing, and being, uh, that fiduciary responsibility. And then they also recognized the growth. And that's huge good news there for the growth and development expansion of our, uh, community.
I'd like to personally send out my heartfelt thanks to our staff and this council for the hard work. They do remain financially responsible for our citizens. You've done a fantastic job, you all have. So thank you very much for that. All right, thank you, Bill. Now, on to Finance Director Carl's report.
Um, twenty twenty-one tax statements are out, you guys have yours in front of you tonight. Um, working on, um, just closing everything for twenty twenty-one, working with the auditors, getting them what they need and getting things all set up and budget set for twenty twenty-two in the systems. Just moving forward on all of that stuff and doing cleanups from year to year.
I thought I read somewhere, because of COVID during twenty twenty-one, that, uh, mayors and councils of small cities didn't have to pay taxes on their.
Hi, I think I missed that.
Well, check in.
He's a farmer, he hasn't paid taxes in years.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Carl. Public Works Director Sean, do you have a report?
Uh, there's a rundown in there. Uh, the one thing I wanna add to is yesterday I went out and I flagged a bunch of ash trees in our boulevards that are in pretty rough shape. Uh, I, I, the people I talked to while I was doing it, nobody, everyone was good with it, nobody had any problems. But in case you guys get jumped about that, a little heads up. Uh, I stapled the, the forms on the trees so people can see with my phone number if they have questions. I have had a few people asking, but nobody's really complaining about it, but just something, cause that's a touchy subject from the trees, so you guys are worried about.
See, we did pretty well on that Sturgis.
Yep.
Good, glad to hear that. Thanks for all the hard work you guys did on that snowfall cluster in Aurora, I know you guys were struggling with other things around town too, so. The only one who wasn't struggling was you. But tell the guys thanks a lot. All right, city inch ears report, Jenna, you got anything else for us?
Um, yes, just an update for the twenty twenty-two project. Um, you all will be invited to our open house to happen on, I believe it's Jim John's birthday.
What is it?
The very second.
You were doing your birthdays?
I didn't even know when all sorts.
So you, um, council hasn't been required, but this one, um, since we are going to come back and tell them there will be sidewalks on those five, it's very highly encouraged. Um, but we will have that meeting on the second. We are also actually going to be reviewing the plans with Public Works on Thursday of this week, so getting more input from them. We will have plans and specs in front of you on February eighth for approval, um, and then setting the bid date. So, um, just a little progress update there of dates to come, things to look for. So, um, then when we get done with that, we'll move forward to twenty-three, so, um, things keep going.
All right, any questions for city? Thank you, thank you for the meeting, thank you, Jenna. Library Director's not here, Fire Chief's not here, Pool Director's not here. That'll take us to committee commission board reports. Chamber of Congress, nothing in the packet, and there's no representative, EDA, HRA?
Meeting next week.
Finance?
Nothing.
Library?
No meeting yet.
Are you gonna make it to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're not gonna be out of country for this whole, all right. Heartboard? Uh, met last night. Personnel?
Interviewing for a new maintenance position.
Client zoning?
No, our minutes from the last meeting are in there, and what are we meeting again, Cheryl?
Uh, no, we don't have books yet.
Okay.
All right, public safety? Public works?
Nothing.
Ready?
No report.
Roll call?
No report.
Transit advisory committee?
No report.
You need the microphone? Thank you for hanging in there. Communications, nothing in the packet, open mic. Mark, do you wanna use your open mic? All right, Dan, are you gonna use it?
Thank you.
You guys, sorry.
One thing to add.
Okay, one thing to add.
Um, staff, we were talking today about twenty twenty-two project. We are looking to bid it as best value again instead of low bid in that, um, we would be asking that the Public Works Committee needs to do the review.
Thank you for that. We have one question.
Bill, I think this is for you, and I saw on the post office today that flats fifty-five sold. Does that affect, uh, any money that's owed to us from like the park money or a pay for the new, the new building?
Nope, the city, according to Mike Babani, our financial advisor, there shouldn't be any, um, downfall from the city's side of it. We are looking at how the sequence work on how they, you know, how we do those approvals or pass-throughs. But as you know, any help that we gave was either pay as you go, so a new owner would still have to perform. And then, uh, they just recently paid their application fee on the first building, so we'll monitor that as we start that.
And they paid off the, the assessments for the utilities, that was part of the sale.
So kind, actually, it's a good deal, because that shows additional investment into our community. And then obviously, when the sale price goes up, you know what happens after that? The elevations go up, and, you know, so that'll make that property more valuable. Cause last we had heard, they had detached about a four million dollar valuation of that building. And now if it's a ten million dollar sale, we'll see what that does.
So who's built the second building, the original builder or the new?
Yep, yep, we're still working with the original builders.
You have any questions, man?
Was that just that building, or do they buy the whole?
Really? As far as we know, it's just the building. Um, and part of a sale price on apartments is based on lease.
Of course.
Revenue for, so that's why it's a little higher, and the county will probably reflect that, but.
All right, for the first last motion of twenty twenty-two, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?